It's bad, though. I mean, his situation is uncomfortable.
I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the March 16th, 2021 County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phone. And the meeting documents are in the folder on the end of the counter if you'd like to look at that. If you need a listening device, you can check with Craig, who's in the back corner, and he could help you with a listening device. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from March 2nd, 2021. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Sorry.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $5,611,800. Whoa, I got that wrong.
Pay the bills.
Second. Motion and a second. Comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So these bills include, you know, it's a little higher number than we normally have.
We're not even on a heater. So, go ahead.
It's a little higher than we normally have. Includes $3 million remitted to the state on motor vehicle and $1 million for the cooler, which we put into our heating plant.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item four is reports. Item A is the sheriff's reports from February of 2021. Item B is a register of deeds statement of revenue for February 2021. Item C is a highway monthly construction project update. Item D is the Minnehaw County coroner's report for January 2021. Item E is the auditor's financial reports for February 2021. Yes, we have Kim here for an update. And I will remind all of you that all of our reports are on file at the auditor's office if you would like to look at them later. Morning, Kim.
Good morning, commissioners. I have two sets of reports to review with you briefly this morning. The first are the February operating results. And we've got the cash reserves for the general fund standing at 29.8 million at the end of February compared to 10 and a half million a year ago at this time. The highway fund currently at 4.7 million compared to 11.4 million from a year ago. Then we've got charts of our year-to-date expenditures. Our expenditures are trending slightly behind where we were last year as a percentage of budget. That's due largely to the timing of payroll for the year. If you look at the chart specific to the personnel expenses, you can see we're at 15.5% of budget compared to 18.7 a year ago at this time. And that's because we had more pay periods year-to-date last year than we've had so far this year. No other real concerns with where our expenditures are falling at this time. And on the revenue side, we are favorable as a percentage of budget. We're at 6.3% of overall budget compared to 5.5% last year at this time. That's partially due to property taxes coming in a little faster so far this year than last year. And the other area of interest is in other revenues. The fees from the register of deeds office are trending well ahead of last year by almost we're at about $500,000 year-to-date this year compared to $300,000 last year. So the recording and transfer fees are way ahead of where we've been. Are there any questions about the February results?
Questions? I guess not. Thanks, Kim.
Okay. So then, the next set of reports are the annual reports for 2020. We will be publishing our annual report following approval of this report. And the first schedule that we have is an abbreviated form of our annual report that is published. And if you look to the far right column, the total governmental funds column, you can see that we started the year with reserve balances of 43.4 million, almost 43.5 million. We had total revenue countywide of 119 million, total expenses of 105 million. So we grew our fund balances by 13.8 million over the course of the year, ending at 57.3 million. Also, as of the end of the year, our total outstanding debt is 61.4 million. That's predominantly the financing for the jail, along with some other older bond issues we're still paying off. And lastly, our self-insurance fund at the very bottom of this schedule, you can see we ended the year with a reserve balance of 1.9 million.
Do we have to approve this, Kim? It's not on my sheet.
I'm sorry. It's not for approval. We're just submitting it for your review and then it will be the published document as well. We're required to publish by March 31st.
Any questions for Kim on the overall analysis?
Attached to this, we've also provided you cash flow analysis for all the government funds and a summary of the operating results specific to the general fund so that you can see where our larger variances to budget were in revenues and expenses. If there are no questions about that, I'm finished with my report.
Doesn't look like there is. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number five, which is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is authorize the chairman to sign the notice of the ICMA-CR for the county's internment of transitions to another supplemental retirement plan provider and to sign notice of SDRS, the county's intent to offer the Roth 457. Thanks, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I'm asking for your approval today to start the transition of our retirement plan, our supplemental retirement plan from ICMA to SDRS. I presented a couple of weeks ago about our committee's efforts over the past year to look at the lineup offered by both entities and the expense ratios. And again, I would just want to send out my thanks to everybody who helped with that project. I'm happy to bring this request forward to you. We think this is a great move for county employees. We did give employees a chance to, or sent out an email a couple of weeks ago to let them know. Appreciate everyone who looked at that as well. Today, we're asking for the formal approval to start the transition. It will take a while. It'll probably be about a 14 to 16-week process. It's going to impact about 162 individuals, both retirees and county employees. But we really think this is a good move to go to the new, or to go to the plan with SDRS.
Carrie gave us a briefing on this about two weeks ago, but are there any questions?
So, as you know, Carrie, I did get a concerned employee call me on this issue and was worried that during the transition from one fund to another that they would be selling low and buying high. That won't happen, right?
What will happen is there'll be a two-week blackout or blackout period where contributions will no longer be accepted. And then during that period, the funds will be mapped over. There will be a one-day period where those funds are actually transitioning. But you have to consider it this way. If your funds were with one entity and the market drops, it's going to drop no matter where those funds are at. So the impact should be very minimal if any.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
I just would say too, I mean, that's very common practice. There's really no way around that. Anytime you make a change in a retirement plan, that's typically what would happen. And so we can't make any guarantees about anything. But overall, the move makes a lot of sense and we think it would be in the best interest of most employees going forward. So I would make a motion to approve.
Okay. Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Carrie.
All right, thank you.
Item number six is abatements considered for approval. Chris Lilla. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, commissioners. Chris Lilla, equalization. Yeah, we've got a number of abatement requests here for you today. First one we'll jump into is item A is Wellington Township parcel number 13423, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $1,265. So this one is an exempt entity purchased the property mid-year. So we're recommending approval of that abatement.
Okay. I need a motion and a second and a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, Olivia.
Barr?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
The next three items, B, C, and D, is South Dakota Department of Game, Fish, and Parks, parcel number 16610, 2020 property taxes in the amount of 52188. Then South Dakota Game, Fish, and Parks, parcel number 16617, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $1,089.92. And South Dakota Department of Game, Fish, and Parks, parcel 16621, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $986.06. Again, this is an exempt entity that purchased mid-year, so we're recommending approval of that abatement.
Motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
B, C, and D.
And a roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Items E, F, and G are for First National Bank, parcel number 46856, 2018 property taxes in the amount of $440.88. Same parcel number 46856 for 2019 property taxes in the amount of $465.68. And same parcel number for 2020 property taxes, excuse me, in the amount of $454.86. So this here was a drive-through lobby ATM that was torn down that we did not know about and we have verified it was gone through our imagery and things. So normally, they should get a RAS permit to notify us of that, but we are limited on how far back we can go. So it was actually gone multiple years prior to that. So we're recommending these three years for abatement.
Motion?
Second.
I'll make the motion.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Barr?
Bender?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye.
Items H and I, pardon me if I mess this name up, Buasee Safiet. It's parcel 74217, 2019 property taxes in the amount of $9.76. And then same parcel number for 2020 property tax in the amount of $57.30. This is a mobile home that unfortunately burned and they lost everything. So the $9.76 basically represents one month and then the next full year. So we're recommending approval.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote.
Barr?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item J, Ryan Hander, parcel 13452, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $1,303.60. This is a house that was removed off of the property and I believe destroyed. So we're recommending approval of this.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And item K is an elderly freeze for parcel number 34937, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $1,547.48. This one here was initiated through the treasurer's office. I don't know much about it other than I know their value meets the value guideline. So we're recommending approval of this abatement.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Madam Chair, question for equalization?
Yes.
So our deadline for appeal is passed, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
For local boards, March 11th.
The folks out there that might be thinking about it, it's too late.
We've had a few. So on that note too, though, just for the public and for commission, even if you've missed the deadline and if there is something wrong, please still reach out to us. If nothing else, we can get it corrected moving forward. And number two, if there is a massive error in your property, we as the board of, or as the equalization office can still make a recommendation or an assessor change for county boards. So if we have a serious error or omission or something like that, there is a possibility we can still get that corrected. However, it won't be handled as an appeal. You have no, the appellant's have no appeal rights. So if it's something minor, like we had an extra toilet, we'll correct that moving forward. We're not going to take the board's time to try and push that back now. But if you've had basement finish in your property and it's been removed due to flooding or something like that and it's still on the books, that's a pretty good amount of money. We want to get that corrected. So we will execute a, basically appeal our own value at county board on their behalf. So.
Thanks, Chris. Good info. Thanks a lot. Item number seven is notices request. Item A is a notice of construction change order number two for the Highway Project MC17-01, bid number MC20-02. I don't think we have to have any comments on it. It's just for a notice. Item eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item nine is petition for computer rise of lane. There are nine. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? I don't see anybody racing to the door, so we'll assume not. We'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a briefing of the MacArthur Safety and Justice Committee from them on the acceptance of the MacArthur grant. Judge Hellman and Erin Zertzka. Good morning, ladies. And company, I should say.
We got everybody.
We got everybody today.
I brought my entourage.
Good morning, everyone. Robin Hellman, presiding judge for the Second Judicial Circuit. I know Erin has submitted a wonderful PowerPoint that gives you a ton of information about the grant request today for approval of the second cycle of funding. A lot of what is in here is material that I went over the last time I was here, about six or eight weeks ago. So I want to just highlight some things that I think would be important for your attention today and things that might be a little bit different than what we talked about the last time. As I mentioned when I was here last, to give an update on the initiatives of the first cycle of grant funding and our plans for the second cycle of funding, we believe that the rubber really meets the road in the second round of funding, particularly in the area and the goals of racial and ethnic fairness. Because COVID canceled a site visit that we had planned, we were able to finish the first cycle of funding with a substantial sum, a fairly substantial sum of almost $180,000 of funding that was not spent from the first cycle of grant funding that we have planned now to spend during the second cycle in addition to whatever funding is approved for that second cycle. These funds have been earmarked, as explained on this carryover no-cost extension sheet here. And two of the things that lead me to say that this is where the rubber really meets the road on the issue of racial and ethnic fairness are the two items that are listed at the top. And one of those is to fund a cohort of the Leaders of Tomorrow for Justice-Impacted Individuals. And the second item there is a program of mentoring and programming for mental health and substance use disorders through Urban Indian Health. And we have a couple of people here who are the leaders of each of those projects. And I want to give them an opportunity to come up and briefly tell you about what is anticipated with those programs that have already begun. And the first is Tamien Dysart from Think 3D here in Sioux Falls. I'll ask Tamien to come up and talk about Leaders of Tomorrow.
Thank you so much. So Leaders of Tomorrow was designed to be a 12-week leadership development program here in the community, specifically with the justice impacted group. We wanted to go a little bit deeper with that. It's a two-hour course normally, but we have added two additional folks, Serene Thunalk and Terry Liggins, to help unpack the information of these individuals through this cohort. There's three main purposes of our Leaders of Tomorrow program is to empower and equip these young leaders to see themselves differently, to build their self-confidence. Secondarily, is to give them the skills that workplace development is desperately looking for, effective communication, how to be a better team leader, et cetera. But the most important one, I think, probably in this is community. A lot of times, especially with justice impacted, they get out, you have a lot of well-wishing goals and ambitions, but when you go back to the same friend groups out there, eventually they kind of pull you back into that. Being a part of the Leaders of Tomorrow community, we have over 130 graduates of a program that is emerging leaders within the community. And so having the umbrella of Leaders of Tomorrow, justice impacted, gives them access to other individuals who as well are looking to develop themselves, empower themselves, and just giving themselves a different level of confidence. We are two weeks into this program and I can tell you, the group that we have, it is a clear difference where these folks can clearly see it's not just simply staying out of jail, out of prison. It's really seeing this is a pathway of success. Our mantra of Leaders of Tomorrow is building a pathway, or building a ladder of success for those who are willing to climb it. And so when you can equip them and empower them to find the empowerment to build their pathway forward to be leaders and to quote one gal in class number two, she said, literally, this is going to change my life because there was, never has there been an investment intentionally made into them, helping them, giving them the skills, helping them to believe a little bit deeper about what's possible in their life. And so Leaders of Tomorrow is simply that of a 12-week course to empower and equip them. And it comes with a six-month mentorship opportunity at the end of that to continue to make sure they have a pathway of success beyond just the 12 weeks.
Do you have any questions for Tamien?
I just wish I had had pathway to success. Does Olivia need his name?
Do you have, do you have a business?
Yes. Tamien, T-A-M-I-E-N, Dysart, D-Y-S-A-R-T.
And I'll tell you that Tamien, oh, sorry. Tamien is the co-chair, I would say, or vice chair of our Sioux Falls Leadership Council too. And so next year, he'll be the president of that organization. So, Commissioner Bender?
Thanks for serving in those roles. I was just curious, when you talked about having this bigger community of folks, is there intentional, like gatherings of that group? Or how are they put in contact with the past graduates of your program?
Yeah, so now that we're coming out of COVID, there's quarterly networking events, gatherings, and as well as at each cohort, there's a graduation, which we invite past graduates as well. So again, there's about four broader gatherings for them to get together. There is an online community for them to kind of engage with each other, reach out, support, meet up offline, et cetera. And so they have that connectivity with the other folks within the community.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tamien. Robin, our Judge Hellman, back.
And now we'll hear from Serene Thunalk, who's involved in the Leaders of Tomorrow, as Tamien just explained, but is also at Urban Indian Health, working on our initiatives there, particularly with something called Generation Red Road that she'll tell you about now.
Good morning. Hehoney wash day. My name is Serene Thunalk and I do work with Tamien. I feel very privileged to be a part of the justice-involved individuals who are going through the Leaders of Tomorrow. I get the opportunity to kind of be a part of the program. I'd heard about it and so I sit in and I learn about it. But then the second half is I'm able to meet with women. Right now, we only have one woman. We're looking at building up our programming to include more women. But in particular, what's powerful about that program is it's, they're getting leadership skills, but then they're also, the second half, learning to process things. So we're really working on building that emotional intelligence, which is key. We know that that is key in helping them to gain those life skills beyond the leadership skills. So just wanted to put a plug in for it because it's amazed and it's amazing. I'm amazed and I'm telling people about it. So as you can see, we have at Urban Indian Health, we really seek to provide kind of comprehensive care for anyone. A lot of people think it's just for native people. That is our focus, but we really look at serving people who are socio-economically disadvantaged as well. So with our programming and with this funding, we're able to actually fund a new full-time position, which is very much needed at our agency. We have an influx of people who are coming. We have a new executive director. We're building more behavioral health programming. And in particular, in our city, we don't really have that hub or that place for native people that really focuses on culturally-based programming. So we're really proud to be building that. A part of that programming is our mentorship. We have what we call a cultural keeper. She's our elder in the community and she knows traditional things that really, she's a gem. And so she's building programming where we are actually inviting in, in training cultural mentors. So we have some people who are going to be working with youth and we also have other people who are going to be running ceremonies and things that we know are incredibly important for holistic health for our native relatives. We also have substance use. We have outpatient treatment. We have individual sessions. We do treatment needs assessments and refer out to treatment. And then really just focusing on trauma-informed care. So what we're excited about with building a new full-time position is this person is going to be able to really take on a multitude of roles, including coordination more with the community and really serving more of our relatives. Because we do have, I can tell you, I'm very busy doing the director role as well as seeing youth and really people of all ages that are coming in for our services.
Thank you, Serene. Any questions for Serene on Urban Indian? Don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Serene and Tamien for talking a little bit about their programs. The original impetus of the Safety and Justice Challenge was a reduction in our jail population. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of information about the successes that we've had related to that initial goal. The bookings by quarter went from a high of 5,231 to a low of 3,439 in the last quarter. A lot of that is obviously related a little bit to COVID, but we did see through the first cycle of funding, a great reduction in the jail bookings. And where I say again, the rubber meets the road with racial and ethnic fairness, is we've taken a dive into seeing how that breaks out racially in our community. So bookings by race, and this was by month, excuse me, was 756. Bookings went down to 476 for our white population. That is accounted for 86.2% of the population in our metro area and results in 43% of the bookings. For Native Americans, our bookings went from 540 down to 378, which appears to be a good reduction in that number of bookings. However, Native Americans make up 2.8% of our population, but as far as bookings, they're almost 35% of the bookings in the county jail. For African-Americans, those bookings went from 219 down to 204. They account for 6.1% of our population, but 15.87% of the bookings. So you can see that disparity in how people of different races and ethnicities are being booked into the county jail. So we're really hopeful with this potential second round of funding, as well as the carryover funding, that we'll be able to meet some of those needs that Serene and Tamien were talking about in our community, hopefully with the end goal of reducing the percentage of those bookings and providing quality services to folks of different ethnicities. We also continue to refine our pre-trial services to meet the goals of having people show up to court and not be rearrested. Since pre-trial started in 2018, we have completed over 18,590 pre-trial risk assessments over the course of those years. And we started the pre-trial services division back in January of 2020. We continue to work on how those cases are opened, how they're closed, what reports are valuable, not only to the court, but to the attorneys who are representing those parties, as well as how our data is collected and reported. Since starting the program, we've had 517 cases that were placed on pre-trial services. Of those, 187 were closed and 330 of those cases remain open, which means those folks are still on pre-trial monitoring services. So as part of that goal of getting people to show up for court and not getting rearrested, we're also going to continue our focus on sending out court reminders, trying to expand our ability to send court reminders to folks. And we also did just launch a new application on the UJS website, which is ujs.sd.gov. And on the front page, we have a link to find a court date. And that allows anybody in the state to enter their name and date of birth and find out information about every court date that they have, every case that is currently pending, not only criminal, but civil cases as well. So we're going to continue to work on those efforts if the commission approves the second cycle of funding. So I know that was really quick. It was a lot of numbers. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Bender?
I'm just, I'm curious about the UJS site that you just, do you need anything, do you need information besides your name? Like, do you need your social security number?
Name and date of birth.
Okay. Thank you.
I will say, I sit on this committee with the Safety and Justice Challenge and we meet every couple of weeks. And there's so many moving parts, it's really hard to pin down and tell you everything that's happening. If Erin's back, then maybe she wants to introduce the rest of your staff. If you would do that and just tell, because they came, and they're an important part of what's going on and doing a lot of work for us that we couldn't get along without them too. So if you would just introduce the rest of your people.
Good morning. Erin Zarska, EUSD, Family Med. And yeah, we brought our team here. We've been working very hard over the past year to kind of get some things together and keep all of the projects moving. We have Bridget Diamond Welch. She's our associate director of the Center for Rural Health Improvement in a way. We have Shar Green-Maximo, and she's our community engagement coordinator. And then we have Clara Pierskala, and she's our research associate too for our team. So we're really excited to be a part of this work and a part of the team as we move forward. And one other item, just to note, so you heard about a lot of programming that's going to be going on. So the next, as soon as we have the agreements all ready, we'll be bringing the contracts to execute those services here within the next few weeks to the commission for approval.
So, thank you. Any questions for Erin? Okay. Thank you, folks, for all coming. This was just a briefing today, and then we will move on to our next item, which is 10.5. It's authorize a chairman to sign the MacArthur Foundation Grant Fund Agreement for January 2021 through December 2022.
Authorize the chair to sign that grant fund application.
I'll second, and I have a comment.
A motion and a second. Go ahead.
I just want to, I want to thank all of you for the work that you've done. I also want to thank the MacArthur Foundation. I mean, they, the money that they provide has done amazing things in our community already, and they allow us the opportunity to craft a plan that works for our community and address the issues that we have. And so it's not, you know, while they have things that they're promoting, they really do allow us to come up with a plan that really works for our community. And we've seen that in the first round of funding, and I'm really excited to see what kind of great results we get out of this round of funding.
A motion and a second to accept the grant money. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Again, thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you for coming. And slip, slide, and away out of here, I guess. So that will move on to item 11, which is a briefing on the Department of Equalization. Chris, welcome back.
Good morning again, commissioners. Chris Lilla, Equalization Office. Our briefing here today, it's very similar to the one we presented to you last year. It's just kind of give you a pre-run for our future budgetary requests, letting you as the commission know and the public know some of the duties of our office and what we do and why we do it. First slide here is just our oath that we do take, and it's, I'll just read that out. "We do solemnly swear that we will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, that I will faithfully and partially and honestly discharge the duties of my office, particularly that I will assess all property assessed by me at its true cash value according to my best knowledge and judgment. So help me God." Now, some, that might be words, but for me personally, I take that to heart, and I know our office does too. We want to do the best job that we can. We want to do it ethically, honestly, fairly, and equitably. So we put a lot of weight into our oaths. We are a professional department with professional duties. So not everyone agrees with what we do and how we do it and why we do it, and that's just fine, but we want to do the best job that we can do. Next slide. Some of the things that we do is we maintain and update all county data. We assess all real estate property for taxation. We track and record all sales data. We establish growth and TIF increment values. We administer about 95% of the exemption programs. And we also work with planning and development for future projects and reappraisals. As far as the department goes, we are the largest county in South Dakota with 188,616 people, just over 73,500 parcels. That's a lot of data to keep track of. That's land, basically every parcel is land unless it's a building on leased sites. So not only do we keep track of the land, but we keep track of all improvements to that land. And so when you're looking at 73,500 parcels, if we looked at our improvements that we track, we're probably well over 500,000. I mean, when you've got a farm that's got 60 buildings on it, we have to account for each and every one of those buildings, as well as the land. So there is a lot of data in our office. For each property, we keep a detailed working file that is updated any time a change is made. Some of the information recorded for each parcel is obviously the parcel number, the map ID number, which tells it where it physically sits, current property information and property history, all associate, all sales associated with each parcel, sketches, property value history, all the program applications such as the owner occupied, elderly freeze, photos, which we'll be doing better on some of our folder, photos are quite old, and inspection notes. So the inspection notes are any time the appraiser makes a visit to that property, they document what, why, why they were there and what they did. Next slide, 2020, we're edging almost to 8,000 sales this year, just 7,800 and change. Not all of those, because of interest rates, not all of those are true transfers. A lot of those are refis. But every time there's a refi or a deed filed, we have to process that. So it is getting to be a lot, you know. We only have one person in the office that execute those sales, so they are busy. You know, we've remained fairly consistent at over 7,000 in the past few years. One of the takeaways from this here, and I won't read all of this, is to just look at the graph at the bottom on the right. If you look at 2018, our sales have, in 16, 17, our sales have remained fairly consistent. The good sales, which would be, I guess, the one on the left on the bottom, the blue, those are the ones that we can use to analyze the market. So again, in 2020, you'll see, we had an extreme amount of transfers, but anything that's a refi, sold to a relative, not offered on the open market, those sales are rejected. We can't use those to raise or lower the market values. It's only the ones in the blue. So we've decreased a little bit in our good sales. But take a look at the amount of value increase that is occurring with these transfers. We exceeded $1 billion of sales transfers this year. That is an enormous amount. Next slide. So we analyze each sale to determine if it's a good sale, if it's a bad sale. We look at the specific valuations in relation to its property characteristics and/or land productivity. We annually evaluate the level of assessment in each taxing jurisdiction. We review sales data to determine market fluctuations and implement assessment adjustments accordingly. Lamest terms, we look at all the sales. We determine where and what is selling the best, the least, all of that. We make the applicable adjustments, whether it be at a neighborhood level, a property type, things like that, to keep us in compliance with state law. State law says that countywide I have to be assessed between 85 and 100%. And I've talked on this with the commissioners a few times, but when we began this year, our level of assessment, so last year when we sent out our assessment notices, we were just over 90%. We roll forward a year, we haven't really done anything. We look at those values against sales, and our level of assessment had decreased to 85.5. That means our market increased 5.64 from where we ended last year, countywide. That is a strong growth market. Again, at the end of the year, so 85.5 is my starting point. I need to stay between 85 and 100. I analyze all those sales in those neighborhoods, and I drill down and figure out what areas need what adjustments. I make those applicable adjustments, again, targeting, I'd like to be between 90 to 94%. And we actually have an error on our ending assessment ratio down there. It says 90.5. My ending ratio for this year was 90.93. So we started at 85.5. I make the adjustments where they're needed. I put the new values back in, compare those to the sales, and recalculate a level of assessment, and we ended at 90.93. Yes.
So I'm just, I'm processing and listening how an audience might hear this. And I'm curious how you would address, because I've heard from several taxpayers who've, whose property's gone up 30, 40%, and you just said the market's gone up 5%. So how, how do you, how does that happen?
That's countywide. That's taking all sales, throwing them in the bowl, saying, here is our values as a whole on sales, and here's our values now. When I drill down into the specific areas, and especially this year with, some of it is conversion from the old program to the new. Some of it is we house-typed. That was probably the biggest change, where we broke all of our residential houses into olders, mid-aged, and newers, and we analyzed those. We split our neighborhoods, so they were large, and I'll cover some of that in a little bit. We had overly large neighborhoods. We went down to smaller. We targeted 700 parcels. We have a few that are a little more, quite a few that are a little bit less. So the analogy that I use is if there's three of us in a car, one's going 50, or we all, one wants to go 50, one wants to go 75, and one wants to go 100, we've all been going 75 because that was the median. So somebody's been going 25 too slow, and somebody's been going 25 too fast. I've split those neighborhoods out into smaller groups, given them their own cars. So the ones that want to drive 50, they're going to go down 25% because we're going to value them according to the sales, more like them in a smaller geographic area. We house-type them, so if it's an older, mid-aged, or newer. So with that, comes movement within the values. The values last year went wrong. It was just the study group and the way they were studied. This year, we have made good revisions to really focus and calibrate our models to apply the value changes where they needed to be. In most of those cases where a property went up excessively, over 20% or so, most of those cases that I've found have been our older homes. And the reason is because they, we run them against depreciation. So if you've got a 1930 home, costs you, costs $180,000 to build new, we're going to take 60% of that value away because it's old and depreciated. We're down to $70,000. The problem is, is it's selling for 120, 130. Now I can make the adjustment just to those older homes to say, I'm at 70, and I need to be at 110,000. That's a big increase. When it was one big pool, and they were blended with the olders, the mids, and the newers, and I'm throwing those, they say I need to go up 30%. The mids say I need to go up 8%, and the newers say I got to go down 4. When I average those all together, the average, I've only been able to go up 10% to everyone. While that's pushing the newers over, it's undervaluing the olders. Now, with our stratification in our data, I can apply the adjustments to particular house types and get more fair and accurate. So most cases this year, the increases were primarily to our older homes because we were depreciating the values so heavily, and we weren't able to calibrate those back to the market, and now we can.
Thank you.
Next slide. Again, we are required by law to look at, at every property on a cost approach, an income approach, and a sales comparison approach. The cost approach is the foundation of what we do. We go out, we measure all the properties, we come back, we put it into our, into our CAMA system, which is the computer-assisted mass appraisal, PROVAL. We draw that property, we tell it how many bathrooms, how it's built, what's the grade, what's the condition of that property. That's the cost approach. Uses Marshall and Swift cost tables to give us a cost to construct that property new. Then, of course, we depreciate it. Once that's done, we go into more of a hybrid. We have our cost depreciated. Now we're going to compare that value to sales, and that's where I'm going to apply an adjustment at a neighborhood level to tell me, do I need to go up 5%? Do I need no change? Do I need to go down? That's where we're blending into the sales comparison approach. When it comes to the income approach, it's primarily not for residential properties. This is for income producing. So they're always considered. We use income on our apartments a lot. We can use it on gas stations, things like that, if they would provide their profit and loss statements. But primarily, apartments is the main thing that we use the income approach for, because we can directly capitalize their net income into a projection of market value. Growth, the next slide. You can see our permits have actually decreased a little bit since 2015, but we're holding pretty steady at just about, just over 7,000 building permits. Again, take a look at the chart on the right. This is the growth. Even though our building permits are staying static, if you look at the growth, some of it is cost of labor and materials that have gone up with building permits. Some of it is just the overall value of the projects and construction that has been occurring in Minnehaha. We are just over a half a billion dollars of growth this year. That is new construction. And half a billion dollars may not seem like much, but it correlates to about a 3% growth. And if you're going 3% growth on 16, 17 billion of value, it's a lot of money. There's a lot of new construction. We are booming. The next slide. Again, as I'd mentioned earlier, we administer programs to help taxpayers reduce their overall tax burden. We stay up to date with changes in laws and programs. We are in direct communication with taxpayers in regards to their applications. Some of the examples that we facilitate is the owner occupied application, elderly freeze primarily starts in the treasurer's office, but we're a component of that, discretionary formula, disabled veterans, renewable energy credit, religious, educational, charitable exemptions, agricultural exemptions, and just a host of other programs that we facilitate and manage within our office. It's now kind of the meats and potatoes, the pat ourselves on the back a little bit, and ask you to give us more money in our budget request next year. Some of the things we've accomplished this year, we did finally complete their system conversion from AS400 to PROVAL. All values are coming out of PROVAL this year. It's not perfect yet, but we are getting there. We're getting much, much better. So that is a big, a big feather in our hat, especially to my staff. It's been a long 20 years for some of them, only a short couple of years for myself, but we finally crossed the finish line there. Again, neighborhood subdivisions, as I'd mentioned, we had overly large neighborhoods, particularly in Sioux Falls Residential, where we had 2,600 parcels in a study group. In some cases, we're now down, we're looking at 700 homes to compare you against, to determine your value against sales, not, not the sleuth. So that is a great advancement for us. Property type modeling, again, we broke our houses across the countywide into olders, mids, and newers. So now, if a new home sells in your neighborhood and you're an older, that new home sale is not impacting your value. You're only going to be valued against houses like you in a smaller area. So again, more accuracy for us. Land conversion, we converted all residential land in Sioux Falls from front foot to square foot. We had quite a few anomalies hanging out there where land was, we had so many varying rates over 20 years. A certain area was using $240 a front foot, then a block away, they might have been at 320. And here, we had land that was the exact same size in the same neighborhood, coming up with different values. So we've pulled all of that back and equalized land this year. Now, if you have a 10,500 square foot lot, and your neighbors and neighbors and neighbors do, you are all the same value in your neighborhood. There's no more peaks and valleys within those. So again, it's a good platform to start our physical review, and I think we're seeing some fruits of that. A big one here, recalibration of our CAMA software, as I'd mentioned before. Our conditions were not functioning within PROVAL. It just wasn't set up properly. So the only way it depreciated was based on age. So if you had a 2010 home, and I had a 2010 home, and we were the same, same age, same, same building, but yours was broken windows, holes in the roof, things like that, it didn't matter. We were the same value because we were the same age. We've got that functioning within the software now to say, no, my house has been well-maintained, and I'm average condition for my age, but your house is really dilapidated or falling in or in disrepair. We can go in there and adjust that condition now and give you more depreciation, which lessens your value. We never had that capability before. So again, another, another step for us. And as well as advanced mapping updates, we have put quite a bit of information out on the public minimap. Anybody from the public can go out there and click on minimap and turn on the sales and see the sales from this year, last year, and the year before, what they were selling for next to their homes. On our side in-house, we have a slew of data that the public doesn't get to see. We have more analyzing. I can turn on the grades of the neighborhood, the ages of the neighborhood, the sales with the beginning ratios, ending ratios, you know. So my staff, we've given them a lot of tools to really delve into the, into the GIS mapping and utilize it to its fullest extent. Goals for next year, which is the next slide. We planned on starting our physical review this year. We are pushing that back due to COVID concerns, not only for my staff, but for the public. We're, we're going to be going door to door to door to door to door when we do that, and hopefully the public allowing us inside to inspect their property and make sure our data is true and accurate. That was a concern not only for my staff, but we don't want to be a spreader of going door to door to door if we pick something up. So we've, we've rolled that back. We're going to push that back a year. But in lieu of that, we are going to be doing a desktop review this year, which means we're going to be looking at, trying to get through the county as a whole, but we're going to be starting at each neighborhood. We're going to be looking at consistency of grading to make sure that the same house in two different ones is the same grade. Are those conditions right? And we can only base that on the current data that we have, but we've got some, some quality variances as well, where we find two houses that are the same house, and one is a good, and down the road is an average. And it's the same house. It's just the length of time of when that data was collected by appraisers that are probably no longer here, the, the thought processes, the criteria, I don't, just a multitude. It's time to bring all the cats back in and get them herded in one corral. So we're going to be doing that. Updating cost tables, this is something that was not on my agenda to do. It wasn't on my forecast until this year's market analysis with our conversion of our final. Some of our, again, we, we value each property or each improvement at its cost to build it new and depreciate it. And then I have to apply a factor to that to get me back or to be in compliance to get me into that sales range. And I'd like to, again, be at 90 to 94%. So there's a number that gets applied, and that's the increase or decrease. This year, I've got some factors now that our cost tables, I have to factor my cost new depreciated, I have to factor them 1.8 or 80%. So my, my number is 184. When that number gets close to 200, we have to put on new cost tables. We have to update the cost tables. So that's something that popped up that wasn't really on my horizon, but we're going to do that for both commercial and residential this year. to do that for both commercial and residential this year. What the public won't know and won't see is, right now, if you had a two hundred thousand dollar house, right now on your assessment notice, and let's say in May and June I put on the cost tables, I fully expect the cost, the starting point of that house, to go up thirty to forty percent, which means two hundred thousand, you're going to, mid-year the public won't see it, but it's probably going to jump a two hundred thousand dollar house up to like two sixty, because it still has that one eighty factor. What I then have to do is then pull, reduce that factor to get that value back down. So, my one eighty factor will probably go down to a, down to a one ten factor or something like that. So, it'll be hidden to the public, nobody will ever know it, and then that will be kind of the starting point, and we'll analyze that end value against sales next year. Next big thing is the transition from AS four hundred for the tax side of things into INCODE. That one should not be too bad. It's already been done. IT already takes our values from AS four hundred, puts them into INCODE, so that our values actually roll down to the auditor and down to the treasurer. So, that's already done. There's just some tweaks that I have to do in there to, for our office to fully utilize it. I have to set up our discretionary formulas in there, our ag exemptions in there, just a little setup. It isn't too bad. That's not a big mountain to climb there. We ran out of time this year, so we're planning on splitting all of our townships, again, kind of neighborhooding them into the ag parcels, the acreages, and then any developments. Like, I'll use Split Rock. There's a lot of developments out in Split Rock where there are residential developments in a country setting, you know? You've got forty, fifty homes. Well, we're going to neighborhood those. So, those sales and those will not affect the acreages and will not affect the farms and vice versa. We just didn't get that all done this year. So, that's on the to-do list. We're going to finish equalizing the land rates again. We're going to be looking at all the townships, and the small towns, for sure, we're going to be converting those to square foot. I don't think we have the anomalies that we had in Sioux Falls, so it should be pretty clean and pure. There shouldn't be much value shifting there. But, won't know until we get into the data. And then, obviously, we need to maintain our building permits that we get, and if we've got eight thousand building permits out there, we've got a lot of work to do. And lastly, is we need to update our new soil table ones. So, this is going to impact farmland. Department of Revenue is going to a new statewide soil survey. We've actually had it in-house. They gave the counties three years to implement that. We're coming on our second year. Last year, when we received the GIS layer for that, we were too deep and too much going on to even attempt that, so we put that off. So, that is on the docket to do this year. I don't know what that's going to do. Again, there could be a value shift to individual farmers that have certain soil types that are going to change and the ratings are going to change. I won't know. They want me to kind of report my beginning and then my ending and see where those changes are. To see, and I'll have to give that back to Department of Revenue, and they'll take a final look at it to see if there's an adjustment that needs to be made. Their plan right now is to say, we have for like our crop soils, thirty-nine hundred and twenty-six dollars an acre. That's the most I can be on this current soil survey. When I put the new one on, if that is going to drastically increase the total value of a property, what their plan is to do is to adjust that top dollar. Maybe that'll go down to twenty-eight hundred to bring everybody back in line. So, that's kind of their plan right now. I'll have more to come on that when we delve into that, but a busy year ahead of us.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions for equalization?
Let Jean go first.
I'm just curious, you know, with the changes that you've discussed, and obviously you and your staff were quite busy this year, how the appeals look? Are they similar to what you've seen in the past, or?
Way less.
Way less, okay.
As a matter of fact, today, we are starting our local board. Yesterday, I met with the city. We did our good sales, which in the past, you know, just a couple of years I've been here, we've had sixty, seventy, eighty good sales. I think we had sixteen, which means that people have now paid more for their property than their current assessment within this past year. And those that did, they're not much. When I first came here, I mean, we had like sixty, seventy. So, our values are getting more accurate and we're hitting that market. And there's always going to be some that, you know, I have to put everybody in a bowl. There's always going to be somebody that got a good deal on a property and my value now against the model is over and vice versa. Some are going to be under. They paid an extraordinary amount of money for a property we didn't think was valued that high. So, there's always those outliers. As far as residential appeals in Sioux Falls today, we are done in one afternoon. We've got twenty-one appeals to hear.
Christian Barth?
For residential. We've got, I think about, on Thursday, I think right now, we have eight commercial in Sioux Falls. Within the towns and townships, we probably have about twenty-five total. So, we are much lighter this year than I've seen since I've been here.
So, I have a couple of questions, I guess. Is there undiscovered value out there that we don't know about, like finished basements? I mean, people that have errors where you think they have a basement and they're a slab or whatever, that's one thing. But what about the undiscovered? And what does it take for you to find that? Is it just?
Physical reviews. Yes, I am certain every year, there is undiscovered value out there. People, especially basement finishes, and I know Sioux Falls is really good with their code enforcement and building inspections, and people know, but there's still ones that we stumble across that all of a sudden we see a sale come across our desk. You know, we thought it was worth, you know, two hundred and seventy thousand, it sells for three hundred and thirty thousand, and we look at the listing on that, and here it's advertised, recent basement finish, full remodel, and there hasn't been a single building permit taken out for that. So, we monitor those sales and we try and go out and look at those as much as we can, but if it doesn't sell, we're still missing it.
The other thing I would point out is that with the abatements that we had today, there were several that were government entities and stuff. And every time we take something off the tax rolls, everyone else is paying more taxes and, you know, there's quite a high percentage of land that is owned by government, including the city of Sioux Falls, way out in the country. I'm just complaining.
Okay. No more questions? Thanks, Chris. And at the beginning of Chris's presentation, he said, if you have any questions, make sure you stop up in the office and ask, and I will tell you that their staff is very helpful, very knowledgeable, and they are willing to help you very patiently. So, good group of people up there.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. That will move on to item number twelve, which is a briefing of the Ag Business Pillar. Holly Rader. Oh, she's right there. I'm looking at the door. Good morning, Holly.
Hi, how are you? Well, thank you again for having me this year. Earlier, Commissioner Barth asked me how long I have been doing this, and this is my fourth presentation to give you all. I've been with the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce for three and a half years now and have the opportunity of serving as the chamber staff liaison for the Agribusiness Pillar, which is a new term that I will hit on next. Agribusiness Pillar, along with Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce, is both new. From when I spoke to you all last time, what used to be called the Agribusiness Division of the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. So, a lot has happened in a year, lots of name changes. But, just like the divisions were from our chamber bylaws, pillars also serve as voluntary associations of members who desire to work together as a group for the purpose of more effectively promoting a special industry, a business, an activity, or a profession. So, there are four pillars within the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce, Agribusiness being one of them, what I'll be speaking with you today. Experience Sioux Falls is one of those as well, which hits on the tourism industry. And Business Leadership Council, and the newest pillar of the chamber is Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And, I could talk to you about Agribusiness. So, the Agribusiness Pillar of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce advances and promotes the Sioux Empire as an agricultural center through actions that provide a higher visibility of the industry, just like what the bylaws tell us to do. So, some of those actions, actually, most of our actions serve as annual events or initiatives. And on the next slide, we have three very signature annual events. Am I the one controlling this? I am so sorry.
She might have stepped away.
Oh, I can control it.
You can do it.
Okay, perfect. I didn't do the first one, so I didn't know if that was me or not. So, those actions serve primarily as events, as I just said. Three that are very signature, National Farmers' Day at the barn, the Sioux Empire Livestock Show, and Ag Appreciation Day, which is in conjunction with the Sioux Empire Fair, and it is a luncheon that is put on by our volunteers. Speaking of volunteers, all three of these events, as well as all the other initiatives that happen throughout the year, would not be possible without those voluntary associations that I spoke of that are from the bylaws. We have the best volunteers in the world, I would say. So, now I'll hit on just all three of these events, and if there's any other questions about any other initiatives throughout the year, I know I only get seven minutes, so I'll speak quickly. So, this past October, we celebrated our third annual National Farmers' Day at the barn. This event happens traditionally, for the past three years, at the Stockyards Ag Experience Barn, which is down in Falls Park. And, the true mission of this event is to bring our consumers to the barn and to tell the story of agriculture. And it is a family event. We encourage kids to come, pick up their pumpkins, and while picking up their pumpkins, this year was a little different than others in the past. We usually have an activity and get to talk to them about where that pumpkin comes from and just try our hardest to put in a little bit of knowledge here within the city of Sioux Falls and make sure that it's a fun, fun family event near harvest. And we talk about basically why farmers aren't able to be here right now, and it's because they're usually out in the fields harvesting so that we can eat year in and year out. This year was very different in a lot of cases when it comes to events. We still were able to put on our third annual event and just had a lot of precautions in place, but still had an opportunity to tell the story of agriculture. The Sixty-Eighth Annual Sioux Empire Livestock Show just wrapped up there at the end of January. Sixty-eight years of tradition is quite something. I've only been a part of it for four years, but a lot has come into this show in the past four years, and a lot of tradition, all of the tradition stays true. So, speaking of volunteers, again, we have nearly two hundred volunteers that dedicate themselves to that week, and those come from businesses within the community. A few highlights from this past year's show is, we were one of the only shows in the nation at our caliber to continue to have our show. And with that came a lot of tough decisions on what we were going to have within that week-long event, which was extended. Our dates did extend so that we were able to accommodate the numbers we were expecting in a safer manner. And also, we were able to host nearly three thousand families in the city of Sioux Falls throughout seven days. And from an economic impact standpoint, working for the chamber, we have to think about that, as you know. We, it was really something that our community still came together to be able to highlight agriculture in a way that we do annually, but really be able to showcase that to more people this year. With the Denver Stock Show not happening, and also Arizona National and Fort Worth, those are some national livestock shows that happen around the same time as the Sioux Empire Livestock Show every year, and because those canceled, they came to Sioux Falls. So, it was quite a task, but we were able to get it done, and we had well over ten thousand in attendance there with our trade show that goes on, all of our cattle sales. And I can't forget to mention the Mayor's Roundup and Sale of Champions, which was also a great success this year. The business community came together to bring in over sixty thousand dollars for the future of agriculture. All of that goes to the youth exhibitors that are there showcasing their livestock projects. Also, we're able to bring in over ten thousand dollars of scholarship funds, and we had the opportunity of representing over twenty-five states this year. So, those are just some fun facts. So, then, I can't forget to mention Ag Appreciation Day, which happens annually at the WH Lion Fairgrounds grandstand. This past year was very different as well. I'm actually telling you to save the date for our thirty-eighth annual, which is in August, on the eleventh. But, this past year, we were still able to appreciate agriculture with this traditional event. A lot of precautions were put in place more than ever before again, but with the Sioux Empire Fair Association continuing to have their event, we were able to implement a lot of great protocols and procedures for all of our businesses to be able to still come out and, like I said, recognize our hardworking farmers and agriculturists in our region. So, we didn't have nearly the numbers that we used to have this past year. We had right at a thousand, which is still pretty impressive. And, looking into this August, we hope and we know that things will look a little bit better with all the vaccinating and all of the advancements that have come since this last August. So, we are very optimistic about August eleventh. I hope that all of you commissioners can make it if you so want to. That's why I had to say the save the date there. So, in addition to promoting and advancing the ag industry through our actions, we also, as a group, have the opportunity to partner with many other organizations within the community and the region, and we're able to just bring together maybe the gap that there is within urban and rural society. And, as I know, you all know, I really enjoy what I do, and I have the opportunity of serving as an ag cheerleader for this region. And, some of those other partners or organizations that we work with, Sioux Empire Fair is one of them. We also have South Dakota Ag in the Classroom, Groundworks, Stockyards Ag Experience, and Ag United for South Dakota, and even from a government standpoint, we have the opportunity of helping promote agriculture. We are a part of the Governor's Ag Summit this year, which will happen on July eighth and ninth, and I wanted to throw that out there, too. I'll be emceeing, so if you want some entertainment, come on out to the district. But with that, I did that pretty fast, and I usually do, but I want to be respectful of time. If any of you have questions that you would like to ask?
Madam Chair. You know, I think that in the four years since we first met at St. Patrick's Day, your smile hasn't changed, but your Texas accent maybe has.
It's faded.
Faded.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly, for coming. Holly is kind of a one-man or one-woman band. She works really hard and just your information on your annual Sioux Empire Livestock Show. I was gone during that period, but the amount of people you hosted in states is impressive. So, thank you very much for your hard work, and thank you for our agricultural community that you continue to support what we do here in Minnetonka County. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen is a briefing on the Glory House by Mr. Johnson.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to be here. To start with, I think we all know all the challenges we've all faced with the COVID, and sitting in a communal living center has been especially challenging. And I think all of us in this industry has had to really do some things that has tried to keep our clients safe, our staff safe, and the community safe. So, I just went through a little bit of a listing of some of the precautions that had to be put into place and some of the things we had to do. Trying to keep up with what was going on, both internally and in our community in terms of the pandemic, really created some challenges. Our staff and our clients both, though, kind of rose to those challenges, and because of some of the things that were going on that people were able to do, we were fortunate enough not to have hospitalizations or deaths related to COVID. And ultimately, that was our goal. We did, obviously, drop our residential numbers. We closed down some of our businesses for, pieces of our businesses for a couple of months. All those obviously have an impact on our agency's fiscal well-being, but we were also able to apply for and did receive some PPP dollars, which has maintained us as we move The challenges for our clients was pretty significant. Many, the vast majority of our clients lost their jobs during this time. And, many were obviously in a very vulnerable position. They were kind of, as an accredited treatment facility that's largely supported by criminal justice clients, they were literally a captive audience, and they were put in a tough situation of communal living and trying to maintain sobriety and trying to maintain their, just their well-being. Over the course of the year, we've seen a spike, and we saw a huge spike in terms of substance of use. in terms of substance abuse, of mental health issues, of just a lot of frustration. Going through this though, our clients also came out the other side. People are doing better. People are, as we know in Sioux Falls, there's lots of employment. They have, the businesses have opened up and have welcomed our clients back into their workforce. And, and they continue to do pretty well as of today. Now with the vaccines rolling out, obviously our staff and clients both are encouraged to at least consider it and the majority of both have done so. So those are some of the, the dealings that we've had to cope with as we went through the pandemic and as we continue to reduce our own numbers, slow down our, our community access points and, and do those sort of things. And we will continue to do those things until, until we don't need to. So it could be a little while. Next piece I had mentioned was the, was the departments. As all of you know, the county was good partners in, in helping us move forward. We've been running about an 80% capacity, which is a little bit lower than what we want. But there's a lot of factors that played a part in that. We've also found out as a, as a, as a new landlord in the community, how hard it is to encourage people to maintain a drug-free lifestyle in that sort of environment. It's trying to create that community lifestyle within an apartment complex is challenging. And it kind of comes and goes with depending on who our tenants are. But as we've seen, the more work we put into creating that community feeling, the better off our clients are and the more receptive they are to, to see the options other than using alcohol or other drugs. We did fall short of our capital campaign goal during the COVID pieces. Not by a lot. We were fortunate to have a lot of really strong donors step up and help us as we moved toward that finish line, but we still did fall a little bit short. And we'll continue to work on that 1.34 million as we go forward. We do, we are in the process of, early process of sketching out what the next building phase is actually going to look like. As you can well imagine, everything just stopped. And, and so we are moving forward with some of those plans. And the Board of Directors and our other partners, we're all working together to probably, probably look at sometime in 2022 to actually begin construction. The other thing that we have focused on this, this past year and this year as well is to spend more time with trauma-informed practices. It's been something that's been kind of a passion of mine for a long time. And we are able to move forward and help our clients understand that relationship between trauma and addiction and mental health issues. One of the key pieces that we have also been very much involved in is creating a stronger case management type of services. Anywhere from, you know, nutrition needs, transportation, medical care, pharmaceutical care, all those sort of things our clients need. And particularly as we've gone through the pandemic, those needs have become even more pronounced. So we've been able to add on more case managers to help support those services. And not only within the treatment facility, but also in our apartment complex. So those people have all the support services in places as well. And then finally, I just mentioned the client employment piece. As I said, most of our clients actually lost their jobs almost immediately. And some of them were unemployed for months. And of course, that, that created all sorts of stressors on them as well as their families. With things opening up and with our, you know, our strong employment base in Sioux Falls, pretty much if you are willing to go out and look for a job and you're willing to put in the effort, you can find a job. And most of our clients welcome that opportunity. And so most that can actually have jobs, they do have them. So we're trying to fill that gap in the community of providing employment. This, this, this year, as we move forward, we know that there's going to be some challenges that we're just going to have to deal with ongoing. And trying to be nimble in our response is going to be key. As I talked about COVID, you know, we've really enhanced our ability to provide telehealth. And it's been a key piece of what we've been able to do. And I don't see that going away. We need to be able to reach out and provide services for people where they're really at. And, and that's something that we'll continue to expand on.
Thanks Dave. Questions?
Well, you're maybe the second or third person today to use the word "trauma-informed practices." And I'm just wondering if you could give like a one-minute summary of what that means?
Well, I, I think one of the, certainly I can. And thanks for asking the question. What it really means, at least from our agency perspective, is that we help our clients and our staff to better understand what sort of things has happened ongoing to our clients and perhaps look at how they cope with some of those events. For, for many of our clients, addiction, mental health issues, things like that have been a coping mechanism. And that's what, and that's what helped them survive some of those trauma issues. So if you take a look at it through a, through a coping mechanism piece, then you can start taking that apart and help them realize that how I used to cope with something when I was 25 and drinking heavily and putting needles in my arm is in a very functional way to really cope with some things. So we help them understand what happened, why they were doing what they were doing. We don't shame them or, or beat them up for being an addict and then help them come up with healthier ways to, to deal with life. And so it's really an important piece, not only for our clients, but our staff as well. You know, they need to understand that all these, all the behaviors are saying and all these things that are happening within our clients, there's causes for those things. And it doesn't make sense maybe for me to put a needle in my arm, but for our clients at certain parts of their lives, that might have been the best they can do. And it's our job to help them understand that and hopefully get them to live their best lives possible. That was probably longer than a minute.
With this new COVID relief bill, are, are you able to get any funding from that?
Well, I'm, I'm doing the research on it and I have a couple other our partners that are doing some research on it. I think we're going to be able to, but I haven't really found the line in that that says that we will actually qualify or not.
Asking, thank you.
But we're, we're looking.
Dave, thanks for what you do. Are most of the people that are involved in Glory House criminally justice, criminal activity involved people that come to you through that system, that they step out of ours and then end up in your place? Or are there people from off the street that they decide, we're going to go this direction?
The majority are somehow tied into the criminal justice system. There are some that just show up and need help. And that's fine. We, we're credited, we can do all those things. But the vast majority is going to be through the criminal justice system.
One more thing you mentioned was the telehealth. And you think about where we were five or six years ago with telehealth and it was just starting to come out. And boy, this last year, even our meetings going through Zoom and whatever other platform you're using, but telehealth has been a huge, had a huge impact on how we can reach people in our community. So.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
And we'll move on to item number 14, which is consider a motion to declare various jail capital assets as surplus. Mattson.
He's only waited an hour and a half.
Good morning Commissioners.
We're still happy to have him.
How's everybody today?
Great.
Yes, I'm here to talk about some of our jail capital assets and have them declared a surplus. And with a couple of them getting transferred to facilities. I wasn't quite sure how you want me to do this. Do you want me to read through the list?
I don't know that we need.
I think if we have any questions, we can ask them.
Yeah, I don't think we need to read through the list. Maybe just, we have some items to be disposed of. And item A would be disposal and recycling. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to dispose as suggested.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, oh. Sorry, you're right. I'm looking right at it. Roll call vote please.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hi Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And I will say, if somebody really wants to see those, those are all available in our weekly documents. So the next one is to transfer, for transfers to department, facilities, departments. Do you want to speak on that one?
I'd be happy just to make a motion to transfer. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, so.
I, I can say that JDC was very happy to get that generator from the correction center.
I'll second Gene's motion.
Okay, motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Hi Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming.
Thank you much.
Item number 15 is authorize the chairman to sign a renewal agreement to provide human services casework to Lincoln County. Jamie Phillips, is he here or? He is on the phone. So Jamie, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Good morning.
Good morning Jamie.
This is Jamie, county human services here. Thought I'd pop in just in case you had any questions on this item. Basically, this is, the contract is going, the agreement is going to be unchanged outside of the fact that the annual increase is taking place for the Lincoln County caseworker's salary and benefits. And I plan on taking this over to the Lincoln County Commission next Tuesday.
Any questions for Jamie?
And make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks Jamie. Item number 16 is briefing.
Thank you.
Briefing on the March 16th, 2021 Minnehaha County alcohol beverage compliance checks. Olivia, thanks Olivia.
Good morning. In late February, the sheriff's office conducted an alcohol compliance check, which five licensees failed. Of those five, one of them was licensed by Minnehaha County, which is MTZ, or sorry, MZTLCDBA pump and pack. They have not had a violation since June 2007, so I would say that's pretty good. They do have to do a public hearing at their renewal time, which will be this spring. Will most likely get their application sometime in April, May, and then have to hold a public hearing. So.
Madam Chair, sorry. Did they have a violation in 2007 or is that when they came into existence?
They had a violation in 2007.
Okay. And we have the sheriff's office here. Does anyone have any questions? I don't think so. I think you're off the hook.
Thanks for coming though. Yeah.
Thank you for coming over. And this is just a briefing and like Olivia says, we'll be addressing this later in the spring. So if there's no questions.
Olivia won't be here.
Olivia won't be here. That's okay. Without, with no questions, we'll move on to the item number 17. Thank you Olivia. Item number 17 is consider a resolution to request partial termination and release of grounds lease auditor.
Yes. Good morning Commissioners. Ben Kye Auditor's Office. So yes, the resolution before you today is related to the ground lease that we have. Most of our property, or not all, most of our property, similar properties in the county are encumbered through bond issuances. One of those issuances was 2016A, which encumbered the Work Release Center out on West Russell, the Juvenile Detention Center, and what we call land for expansion, but is the law enforcement center. All the proceeds related to 2016 have been repaid. So these are all eligible to be removed from the existing ground lease, which if, and if you accept or approve that resolution, that would pave the way for us to declare the Work Release Center as surplus property and for it to be sold. So our recommendation is to approve the resolution that would authorize the auditor to request that our trustee, which is US Bank, to amend the ground lease by removing the, those properties.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ben? Okay, look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. We have roll call vote.
Chair, I just recommend that just because it's clear that we could sell it, doesn't mean we're going to sell it. Just don't, don't rush out and, you know, with torches and pitchforks, thinking we're going to sell that.
No fire sale at this point. Roll call vote please.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hi Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Item number 18 is consider, consider bid results and award recommendations for project number MC 2102, micro-surfacing and crack sealing and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement with Asphalt Servicing Technologies Corporation. The bids were opened on February 24th, 2021. Jacob.
Hi.
Commissioners, Jacob Lars from the Highway Department. First of four items I have for you is this one, to award the micro-surfacing and crack seal project to, to Aztec. Bids came in really good this year. Numbers were actually below what 29, 19 numbers were. And we had estimated under what our total budget would be to allow for some movement in the department. So for our 2021 micro-budget, we had 1.4 million, which leaves a surplus of around 300,000 for this particular area.
Any questions? Look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Hi Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 19 is consider a bid results and award recommendations for project MC 2105, chip seal and crack seal and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement with Asphalt Service Technologies Corporation. Bids opened February 24th.
Same type of deal. Prices came in really good this year in this particular area. So we had 2.29 million budgeted for pavement preservation overall. And we didn't know what the split was going to be between our micro-surfacing job and our chip seal job. So that's why there's quite a bit more saving in this, in this one, based on what our 2021 budget was in 2020. So that's why there's a surplus of 492, 820.
There's no questions. I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the award recommendation for chip seal and crack on MC 21-05.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hi Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 20 is authorize the chairman to sign design services agreements between Minnehaha County and the Civil Design, Inc. for the project MC 21-09, structure number 50-279-140, rehab.
This structure is located on County Highway 130, which would be north of Corson about two miles and then west about a tenth of a mile. Last year, there was some funding made available by the state for preservation. We applied for two of these projects. This is the first of two. This contract that we're entering into is only utilizing a small portion of the grant that we were awarded. This is just for the design and then later on, after the design is done, then we will utilize the construction portion of that budget. And we will also, we have a 20% match on this. So we will do our 20% match on this project this year for design and then construction will be two years out.
Okay. Any questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this contract.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 21 is authorize the chairman to sign design services agreements between Minnehaha County and Civil Design, Inc. for projects MC 21-10, structures number 50-330-066, rehab.
Very similar project. This one, deck replacement and garter replacement, which is what the other one needed as well. Structure's in very good condition except for those couple of items, so it was a good candidate for preservation. It's just south of Sherman there on County Highway 103. The design is this contract, and then construction will actually be bid this fall and in the spring. And that'll be a separate, a separate contract.
It's still amazing how much it cost.
Yeah.
Can you say this was a simple project? I'm looking at the cost, which is 1.2 million dollars total.
1.2 million. Yeah, and we only, we only cost participate in that for 20%, so it's a pretty good deal for us.
It's a very good deal.
And if you look right below there, to replace the whole structure would be 21, is our estimate. So, it's a pretty good deal for us.
Yeah, it's a very good deal.
Madam Chair, and we only have 99 bridges, 2 million bucks each, anyway.
Motion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second with just a comment. I just would note that, I mean, these are all, I mean, every single one of these are really great news for the citizens of Minnehaw County. I mean, we've got really good pricing on the first two projects. And then being able to participate in these programs that are offered with this match really allows us to take county tax dollars and get a lot of bang for our buck. So, appreciate the work you did on that.
Thank you.
So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 22 is consider a resolution to participate in the Bridge Reinspection Program using South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Replacement Funds to hire Civil Design, Inc. Shannon?
Hi, good morning Commissioners. So, this is an annual program we do every year. In the past, we've had a variety of consultants, but CDI, Civil Design, Inc. has been doing our work for us the past couple of years. They, they have been doing a good job. Similar to other state participation projects, our match is 20%. We don't have a, a cost estimate yet because this is for inspections to occur in 2021. We're going to do the west side this year. There's a few more bridges on the east side, which was done last year, and that contract was 106,000. So, I anticipate this, this will be somewhere around that 90 to 100,000 dollars. So, that's what we're asking for you today, is to approve and sign the resolution, which enables us to participate in the state bridge inspection program.
Any questions for Shannon?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Barz?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Shannon, for coming over. Item number 23 is Minnehaw County Liaison Reports. Reports?
I think all my reports were covered by other people today, so...
No, that's what I was thinking.
I would just comment that I had a UDC meeting last week, and it seems like we never get to really do much there. We, they give us stuff and they say, "Please approve," and then we all vote to approve it. Well, I brought up an issue which I'd like us to push the state DOT on, which is to put up sound barriers on Highway 11, otherwise known as 101, where currently is a motorcycle racing track. And I live a half mile away. I can hear it clearly. The people that live right there must be miserable. And we did that on Highway 29, and it was to good benefit, I believe.
Thanks, Jeff. I'd also mention that today, or tomorrow starts the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Convention. Commissioner Karski and myself will both be attending. We have the Board of Directors meeting is this afternoon, late this afternoon, in Pierre. And so, we will be up there. And item number 24 is new business.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Burr?
I just want to bring up a couple of things, which are, one, I think going forward, we need to really strategize. I'm a short timer. I've got like a year and a half before I'm, I'm, well, I won't be dead, but I won't be getting anything done. So, I think we need to look at the issue of home rule for Minnehaw County. I think we need to brainstorm how to spend monies that we have and what our strategies are for building. And I hope that we find the time to get that done. I've seen a couple of possibilities for home rule charter. And, you know, basically, it gives the county the right to do anything not forbidden by the state because they pretty much, you know, put the cuffs on us. And I'm only bringing this forward not to take away your guns, not to ban churches. It's to actually just make our county function better. We are no longer a ma and pa operation. We need to operate with high professionalism and in the best interests of all the people in our region.
Thank you, Commissioner Burr. Anything? No more new, but new business. Is there any old business? Okay. Let's see, with that, we don't have any executive session today, so I would...
Adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.